My name is Phil Albrechtson, contracted by the city of Lakewood to perform hearing examiner services like I do for 20 other jurisdictions in this area like Renton and Auburn and Federal Way. My job essentially is to evaluate whether the proposal you have before you today, the Western State Hospital expansion, meets the city's master plan criteria. And something to keep in mind as we go through this is that the master plan criteria deal with land use impacts to the Lakewood community. I'm not in any position, nobody in the city of Lakewood government is in any position to question, you know, how much money is spent on this project or whether, you know, the legislature should have made that appropriation, whether there's a better or more effective treatment method available for some of the problems that we're trying to address. We're dealing with, you know, traffic impacts and noise impacts and, you know, whether the city has adequate public services to, to address this, this project. Ms. Courtney Brunel there has written up a staff report which identifies what those review criteria are that I have to look at, and it's a very detailed, comprehensive analysis of what's there. So unless, you know, the applicants today or anybody objects, I'm not going to restrict what people have to say about the project necessarily and whether it's relevant or not unless you spend a lot of time on a, you know, something that, that is something we have no authority over. But, you know, your comments are most effective if you address, you know, what we're really concerned about is how does this project affect the Lakewood community in terms of the roads and the services and, and that kind of thing. Now, the, the public hearing format is we're going to start off with presentation from staff. Ms. Brunel will, I believe, right, will go over her staff report and explain why the city believes that, that those review criteria are met for master plan review. When she's finished, then we'll allow the state to come in and the applicant essentially to make a pitch for their approval, you know, explain why they believe the criteria are met. And then we'll open it up to the public. And as I said, we'll start off with testimony from the people who are here today. And once we're done with that, we'll move on to people participating by Zoom. And like I said before, if it turns out we, we still haven't fixed the technical issues, we'll continue the hearing to another day to make sure that everyone can be heard. Once the, the public comment portion is done, then staff, all that, Ms. Brunel, have an opportunity to answer any questions that were raised and to provide rebuttal evidence. And then finally applicant gets final word, and I have 10 business days to issue that, that final decision. Now, by state law, I'm only allowed to consider evidence that's put in the record today. That's, that's really important. That way, everyone who's participating in this hearing knows exactly what information's being considered. I'm not allowed to read about this project in the newspapers or talk to people from the state or the applicant about the project. All the information that I'll be considering will be information that you all have access to. And Ms. Brunel, why don't I let you, do you have like a comprehensive exhibit list that you can post on the screen maybe that we can go over real quick? And I, and I will say they were, we had a over 140 written comments so far in this project, so it certainly has drawn a lot of public interest. And of course, we're going to get all those documents in the record. And part of my job, of course, is to read all those comments and ensure that all the relevant concerns are addressed in my final decision there. Okay.
It includes 16 exhibits, and yesterday evening, we also sent you over two additional public comments for the record.
Okay, all right. And those will all go under, I forgot, what's the exhibit number for the public comment letters?
Number 11 included the public comment matrix.
Okay, so that, okay, and just to be clear, that includes the written comments themselves. We'll say exhibit 11 does that. And Ms. Brunel is airway, members of the public can access all these documents? Is that available online?
Yes, all of these documents are available online at WSHmasterplan.org.
Okay, perfect, all right. So at this point, I just want to ask if anyone out there has any objections over entry of these documents? That essentially would be based on, you object on the basis that the documents aren't relevant to this proceeding or they're not authentic, like there's a deed in there or something, and it's a fake deed. If you, if you disagree with, you know, what's said in these documents, that's not a grounds for excluding the document. That's, if you disagree with the content, that's something you can address in your, in your comments today. So with that, I'm just going to ask if there are any objections, just raise your hand or say I object in these documents. If you're participating virtually, click the little raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And Ms. Brunel, do you see anyone, anyone clicking their raised hand? Or I don't see any objections out there. So hearing none, I'll go ahead and enter exhibits one through 16. That's, that's pretty standard to do. So with that, Ms. Brunel, I guess you're the one that's going to lead us off here. Let me swear in real quick, just raise your right hand, you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, perfect, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Examiner. On February 14th, the city received permit application LU 200027 and the associated CIPA checklist LU 2000030 to revise the 1998 Western State Hospital Master Facilities Plan. Today, we've prepared a brief presentation on the procedural overview, and the applicant will follow up with some project specifics. The proposed update is located in the same general area as the existing campus, 9601 Silicon Boulevard Southwest. A map overview is shown on this slide. The subject site is 288.34 acres in size and is comprised of four tax parcels. Currently, the site is used for the campus for both Western State Hospital and the Child Study Treatment Center and is adjacent to Silicon High School to the west, Fort Silicon Park to the south, and residential housing to the north and east. The property is zoned Public Institutional PI. Essential public facilities are considered a primary permitted use in this zone. The permit application was deemed complete on May 26th, 2020, and the city issued an MDNS on the proposal on June 6th, 2020. No appeal was filed on the MDNS. This update is the first comprehensive update to the existing Master Facilities Plan, which was approved on August 10th, 1998. The original plan has been revised numerous times via conditional use permits to account for small expansions and changes to the 1998 document. As part of this comprehensive update, the State Department of Social and Health Services has proposed a complete reconstruction of Western State Hospital and its campus. The primary intent of this update is to comply with federal and state standards for the care of mental health patients. State policy looks to distribute services for civil commitment patients throughout the state so that patients can be near family and have community support. As the civil commitment facilities become available in Western Washington, civil patient capacity at Western State Hospital will be reduced. Under this model, Western State Hospital itself will concentrate on the treatment of forensic commitment patients. Specifically, the proposed master plan update proposes an expansion of the hospital capacity, including a new 350-bed forensic hospital on the property. This will require the demolition of several existing buildings on site, a new 18-bed residential cottage at the Child Study Treatment Center, and a new community residential treatment facility, or RTF, of 48 beds contingent on the completion of a parallel study onsite of community facilities throughout the region. The public and agency comments played a significant role in ensuring that the 2020 Master Facilities Plan has community compatibility. The city reviewed all public and agency comments from the notice of application period and was, and issued an 11-page correction letter on July 21st, 2020, on the original Western State Hospital Master Facility Plan Submitter. The correction letter and public comments led to the 2020 plan being revised and resubmitted in May 2021. Following this, the city reopened the public comment period for a period of 30 days and partnered with DSHS to hold two public meetings on August 31st and September 9th, 2021. The city reviewed all public comments and issued a second correction letter on August 27th, 2021. The 2020 Master Facilities Plan was again revised and resubmitted on April 18th, 2022, which is what you have today as exhibit two. For reference, the city issued correction letters, for the cities issued correction letters are provided in exhibit 14, and the applicant's response to those correction letters is provided in exhibit four. Per LMC 18A40060, a public facilities master plan is required for all essential public facility civic uses and utilized contiguous parcels of land totaling 20 or more acres that are zoned Public Institutional. These are regulated by 18A40060 for master facilities that, that they shall be reviewed as type three permits. A public facility master plan review criteria, again, is outlined in 18A40060 to include specific citing requirements for mental health essential public facilities, as well as specific review criteria for conditional use permits. The specific review, review criteria and responses are on pages eight through 15 of the staff report. Staff have evaluated the proposal and finds that the 2020 Western State Hospital Master Facilities Plan is consistent with the adopted plans, policies, and ordinances in the city of Lakewood, subject to the recommended conditions of approval provided on page 16 of the staff report. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Examiner, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. All right, let's move on to applicant comments, Department of Social and Health Services. Anyone want to speak on their behalf? And yeah, at the public speaker stage, just go to the podium right there and start off by your last, your name and how to spell it, and then you can go ahead and make your comments. If you want to get a, and Ms. Brunel, how are you handling distribution of the decision? Are you going to be mailing a decision to anyone who provides us with their mailing address, or how does the city normally deal with, with the distribution of a decision in this case?
We will be posting it online again to WSHmasterplan.org, and anybody that's a party of record will receive a digital copy via email. We have emails.
Okay, yeah, so be sure in the sign-in sheet out there to put your email address down if you want to get that email to you. And Ms. Brunel, for the virtual participants, is how do they get their email address to you? Should they put that in the comment section, or how does that work?
Yes, anybody who is not already a party of record, if they could please put their email address in the comment section, that would be perfect.
Okay, great, all right, okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
I'm Bob Hubenthal, H-U-B-E-N-T-H-A-L.
Okay, and sir, let me swear in, Mr. Hubenthal, just raise your right hand, you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Well, good morning, Mr. Examiner, city staff, and members of the public. I am Bob Hubenthal, the Capitol Programs Director for the Department of Social and Health Services, located in Olympia. I'm pleased to be here today as the agency's staff architect, as this agency's staff architect. I provide guidance to our department's planning, design, and construction activities at DSHS's 14 state-owned and state-operated properties. These include our Lakewood campus, home to Western State Hospital, the Child Study Treatment Center, historic Fort Silicon, and the former Fort Silicon Golf Course. Our master planning efforts have been quite a journey over the last three years, but that's nothing compared to the 200 years of history on this active site. I want to acknowledge that prior to the 1820s, our campus was within the traditional territory of the Silicon Indians, who established a large settlement at the mouth of Chambers Creek. Though we have no evidence of Indian settlements on our campus, we certainly expect regular hunting and gathering, gathering activities across these lands. The Hudson Bay Company established activities in this region in the 1820s. Joseph Heath was the first settler on the prairie in 1844 and developed an extensive homestead before his death in 1849. Fort Silicon was located on the Heath Farm in 1849 and operated until 1858. The fort served as a social, communications, and supply hub for the region and played an important role in the Indian Wars of 1855-56. Fort Silicon hosted the trials of Chief LaShie. When the fort closed after the Civil War but before statehood, the US War Department transferred the property to the territory for the purpose of an asylum for the insane. Additional land acquisitions over the next 70 years resulted in the hospital campus we see today. A lot has changed on this property in 150 years. Hospital operations, mental health treatment, and the built environment have all evolved. DSHS's three hospitals are but a small slice of the broader spectrum of behavioral health services statewide. DSHS, together with the Healthcare Authority, private hospitals, county programs, and community-based mental health providers, serve hundreds of thousands of citizens across the state. We, as an agency, strive to improve outcomes for our clients through patient-focused treatment. We strive to improve working conditions for our staff, and we plan to improve our facilities and grounds as a therapeutic environment for safety, security, energy efficiency, and sustainability. This master plan describes our anticipated development on this campus in the next 10 years. We have no certainty that the legislature will fund all of these proposed projects, but we include them all to identify potential impacts and mitigation measures. Next slide, please. Oops. It's the slide with the staff names. Several DSHS representatives are here today or watching and listening on Zoom to share our master plan proposal. Eric Ridenour represents SRG, our planning and architectural consultant. Eric will summarize our 470-page document highlighting the key land use elements. While this master plan addresses land use and zoning in the city codes, many public comments and questions received during our community engagement and open houses related to hospital organization, operations, and policies. We will also use this opportunity to address some of those concerns. Dr. Wablinger is the agency's chief medical officer. Dr. Wablinger, if we can connect to Zoom, will discuss involuntary commitment and patient characteristics. Otherwise, Janice Gogan, our Director of Community Transitions, will cover Dr. Wablinger's comments and will also discuss the hospital discharge procedures. Melinda Silva, our Deputy Chief Executive Officer of the Gage Center for Forensic Excellence, will discuss hospital operations, including our safety and security measures. Others here are available to answer questions, including Aron Martinez, my Capitol Projects Manager, Eric Logan, representing the Child Study and Treatment Center, and Terry Gardner is online, our Director of Security for the Gage Center. I'll call on Mr. Ridenour.
All right, Ms. Brunel, just to state your name for the record, how to spell your name, and then I'll swear you in.
Sure, Eric Ridenour from SRG Partnership, and the last name is R-I-D-E-N-O-U-R.
Okay, just raise your right hand, you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Good morning, all. As Bob had indicated, my job this morning is to walk you through what's in the master plan, what it calls for, and how the various facilities will be accommodated. So as many of you I'm sure are familiar, this is the community context of the hospital as it's evolved over the years, with Silicon to the west and Lakewood to the other sides, with the Fort Silicon Park to the south, residential to the east and north, and as Ms. Brunel mentioned, Silicon High School to the west in particular. Next, please. This is sort of an overall diagram. It indicates where the major areas are. One of the main points to make is that the new replacement hospital, the 350-bed hospital that Courtney mentioned, is generally in the same area that is already developed for the hospital. So, next, please. This is another version of that same diagram with a little bit more detail, a reminder that there are other historic facilities, like the historic Ford Buildings on the site as well, and as Bob alluded to, there's open space uses largely along the northern So as I mentioned, the hospital itself is generally going to be in that southwest area. The footprint that you see there in the sort of light blue-green color was where the early thinking at the time we were developing the master plan was, in terms of how it might be configured. The design effort itself is ongoing, and the hospital will be within that larger belt you see with the A2 tag on it, so replacing some of the existing buildings in there and maintaining others. Actually, before you leave that one, thanks. Where the E is, is where the residential treatment facility that's been mentioned would be located, if that's cited here. The master plan provides for that to be cited here, but it's not definite that it would be, as Courtney alluded to, there's an ongoing study of citing of those facilities throughout the region. And then the CSTC, or Child Study and Treatment Center, is the complex indicated by the GEJIS, sort of on the eastern end of things. This is a summary of the open spaces on the site. They're largely going to remain unchanged. The former golf course is that area to the most northern part of the site. That's zoned separately as an open space and recreational use, and nothing about the master plan is proposing to change that. There are some incidental developments. The CSTC may reposition and redevelop its field throughout all of, yeah, thank you. Throughout all of this, the landscape architect we worked with and our environmental consultant, we're paying particular attention to the established oak groves on the site, and none of the development is intended to encroach on that. If you've reviewed the CIPA documents, you've seen that there are some recommendations for irrigation policies around those to help maintain those, which is in line with how the hospital plans to manage the land. Next, please. So as I mentioned, to build the replacement hospital, several existing buildings from the previous development phases of the hospital will be taken down over time, and those are all indicated here. And some of the parking lots that are in that area will be removed as well. The parking will be replaced with new lots that will be configured around the new development. Next, please. And then if you've reviewed the, the city's work in the staff report, you've seen that several conditions of approval are proposed, and we've reviewed those on behalf of the client, as has the department, and find those to be acceptable and reasonable and are, have no concerns with those. So at this point, I'd like to transition to others from the DSHS team to talk about some of the operational administrative issues that were raised in the commentary.
Okay, thank you, sir.
At this point, do we have the ability for people online to speak? It's Dr. Wablinger, fifth down, yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Wablinger, just so you know, you're not required to have your video working, but we don't, we don't see you yet at this point, but can you, can you let us know you can hear us at this point?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me at all?
It appears our audio is still not working, so I will have that individual come back to troubleshoot again, and we can either, okay.
All right, we'll go on to, move on to the people who can tell us something, so, yeah. And ma'am, what's your name for the record?
To be committed to a state hospital generally for a maximum sentence, or whatever that crime was that they committed, and their treatment is focused on recovery and eventual safe return to the community. We have a community program where people get to take steps towards more levels of independence and responsibility and demonstrate their behavioral health and safety before they are transitioned fully to the community. Patients are treated in our forensic units at Western State Hospital. We also have Fort Silicon competency restoration program on Western State's campus. If patients can't be restored to competency due to their behavioral health symptoms or developmental disability symptoms, they may be referred for an evaluation for civil commitment. Next slide, please, and that takes us to our civil patients. So the, we serve 91-80-day inpatient civil commitments. Under the Healthcare Authority, they have the crisis system and the initial detention, which is up to 120 hours, and then they would have also the 14-day commitments. They also have some community 91-80-day beds, and so the state hospital is part of that system. It's slowly transitioning to be more in the community as we close civil service, some of civil services at the hospital, and we move those towards the community. Patients typically, as I mentioned, have already been in our forensic units or have been in a community placements, receiving treatment, and so they're generally fairly stable when they move over to civil services. And that means they've generally had some medications and some initial treatment, but in order to be safe to discharge, there are some additional services that are needed. We provide a variety of medical rehabilitative vocational and occupational services to help stabilize patients for a safe discharge back to their home community. The, the last population that we serve is treatment for minors, and that is under separate RCW, which is 7134. It's the only state-operated and funded psychiatric hospital for children and youth aged 15 to 17 with psychological and safety needs that can't be met in the community. The average length of stay is 10 to 12 months. Forensic evaluation and company-related services provided to select individuals, so there are some forensic commitments as well and evaluations. There are four age-specific cottages so that we don't have seven-year-olds with 14-year-olds. We have them grouped in more age-appropriate categories. Patients and guardians are heavily involved and encouraged to participate in all aspects of treatment. We do like to have community outings as we get children ready to return to the community and reengage with their family. And they are provided medical, recreational, recovery-related services to help stabilize them for a safe discharge back to their home community. And we have additional professional services provided by the University of Washington's Department of Psychiatry's faculty. There are training programs available at the Child Study Treatment Center for psychiatry, psychology, nursing, and recreational therapy, and they are accredited by the Joint Commission. Next slide, please. So as far as treatment available, I briefly described competency restoration treatment, which focuses on restoring the ability to understand and participate in the criminal court process. Beyond that, we provide evidence-based practices that can include cognitive-based therapies, trauma-informed care, and other therapies. There's individual and group treatment and additional therapies, including occupational, vocational, physical, recreational, and rehabilitative services. Discharge planning. So a lot of the comments that we have received have concerns about the overall behavioral health system and the lack of community services, and we share some of those concerns, and we partner heavily with the Healthcare Authority. The legislature in the last several years has put a lot of funding into building up our community and our hospital system, both because both are lacking in the state to serve the individuals who need our care. And so as we work on these transitions to building community programs, we're also making sure that we're also making sure that the patients that we serve in DSHS are connected to the community services that they need in order to stay stable in the community. So when we talk about discharge planning and the types of places people go, there's quite a variety of settings, as you can see, and this was detailed further in the master plan. I know in Pierce County, there's a lot of concern about the number of patients discharging from the state hospital to Pierce County. So we wanted to provide some data and that, again, like I said, there's more data in the master plan. And what we find is Pierce, King, Snohomish County, which have the highest populations, get a lot of funding for settings and services that support people. And people do flock to big urban centers when they need services that are only available in those areas. And so as we do discharge planning, we are very respectful of the person's choice and where they would like to live and the services they would like to receive. But also we do find that specialty services are available in those bigger urban areas. And so you can see from the chart that we do have out of county residents discharging into different specialty programs like an assisted living facility that has an enhanced adult residential contract. And what that is, is specialized either behavioral health or dementia supports that help keep them safe. There are higher staffing levels and programming available so that someone is able to transition from the structure of a hospital where all your needs are met. You're not doing your own food, you're not doing your own laundry and you need more support as you transition. So that would be what I would call like a medium level of support. In other communities, we don't have one in Pierce County yet, but in other communities, we have even higher levels of support in the community. And so someone might discharge to Clark County for one of those facilities or Thurston County for another facility. So it's not special to, or specific to Pierce County. It's really specific to where the resources are cited. Another good example is the skilled nursing facility. You know, they are in high demand and short supply, and so we have to go where the beds are available for people to get that level of care that they need. So I did want to take that a moment just to kind of point out that this is a statewide situation where we've got to go where the resources are at for folks. Additionally, I know there's some concerns in Pierce County about the number of adult family homes that are cited within the county. DSHS, including the Aging and Long Term Services Administration, doesn't have any say in where adult family homes are cited. And so those are by whatever the, the, the land use is around there and the, and the other codes, which are obviously not my area of specialty. So I think that's great on that page. Thank you. So discharge planning is a robust process at the state hospitals and we start at admission. We definitely take a look at what has worked and what hasn't worked for the person in the community. So we want to make sure that their level of care needs are met in the community. We coordinate, we have partners with managed care that are funding their behavioral health when they get out in the community. We have partnerships with the Aging Long Term Services Administration. And we coordinate with the state hospital social workers who build with the patient and their family and support system that they would like included. A really thorough plan. We also think about risks. So anyone that comes into an involuntary commitment is there for a safety issue of some sort, right? So we want to make sure that when we build that plan, that we've got adequate services and supports to meet those safety needs. And we do create safety plans. We coordinate with community partners and systems to make sure that we're communicating about why they were hospitalized, what the risks are and how our plans help support that person so that they can return safe in the community and they can be safe. I already mentioned there's several services within long term care settings. We also have adult residential treatment facilities, which we often hear called group homes. There's independent living and supported housing, intensive outpatient programs that may meet with someone every single day of the week. Make sure that they take their medications, have substance use, therapy, case management. So there's quite a range of services available in the community. And our plans are very individualized to the person. So if it's your first hospitalization and you want to go back to your apartment and you want that intensive program and you've never had it before, that might be a great step for you. If this is your 27th visit to Western State Hospital and you want to go back to a shelter with no services, we're going to say, hey, let's come up with a better plan that has a better chance for you sustaining your recovery and your safety and wellness.
All right. So that is the end for me and I will turn it over to Linda Silva.
Good morning. I'm Melinda Silva, S I L V is in Victor A. Melinda is in A, L I N D A.
Okay, let me swear in. Do you swear a firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am Melinda Silva. I am the Deputy CEO for the Gave Center of Forensic Excellence at Western State Hospital. My main role is operations and ensuring safety and security throughout. So I want to start with giving you just a high level overview of Western State Hospital and operations. We are one of two state owned adult psychiatric hospitals in the state of Washington and we serve roughly 20 counties in Western Washington. Our mission is to promote the recovery and wellness in partnership with the people that we serve. And we opened our doors in 1871 on the current grounds that the hospital stands today. We just celebrated, as mentioned earlier, our 150th anniversary last year. We're always looking to transform treatment and programming. Recovery really starts with, with treatment. And so and so transforming our, our treatment programs to better serve our patients also comes with modernizing our campus. As you know, 1871, though beautifully built back in the day, doesn't necessarily quite meet the needs of that modern therapeutic design. And that's something that we are really passionate about bringing to our patients to help promote recovery and to meet our mission. So therefore, a critical component is bringing in and building a new 350 bed hospital on Western State Hospital's campus to be able to bring in that therapeutic milieu, that living space for the patient that has enhanced security and safety features for the patients that we serve as well as the community. And we are really excited to be able to have these new designs that are modern and to be able to enhance some of the security, the physical features. So it will be fully locked, secure facility, just as Western State Hospital is. So you have the patient units that are locked and you also have entryways that are locked at the forensic side of the hospital. So you have a Sallyport with specific security staff that monitor that 24/7. You also have different passive and active measures. You have outdoor recreational areas that are going to be enclosed with anti-climbing fence that's integrated and built into the walls. As you'll see mainly on Western's campus, you will see those outdoor areas that are on the outside perimeter of the building. With the new design, you will actually see those built into the interior design of the hospital, which is a really neat feature. And it also brings in more of that therapeutic model to the patient, more of that natural living environment and space. We also have all entrances and exits controlled. So on the wards, you have direct care patient staff that are also monitoring those entrance and those exits. But you also have security specific staff. So not only are they also at the perimeter and entrances, but they do patrols via car. They do rounding and walkthroughs on the wards and throughout the hospital. And we have video surveillance and coverage, which will also be in the new design throughout the entire hospital on the wards and all the different areas. Staff are trained in de-escalation. They're trained in emergency management processes. And it's all infused with that therapeutic model. We also, though we have the ability to handle any situation in-house within the hospital, we also have assistance from Lakewood Law, Lakewood Police Department and law enforcement. We partner with them. We meet with them weekly and they have been just a wonderful partnership within our, our program and facilities at the hospital. So with this, our next slide is really just showing you the security perimeter. I don't know if you can see that real well, but the darker red line just shows you the secured perimeter of the facility. And then it's a little bit of a dotted, more of a yellow line is just showing you the existing security fence. So the red is going to be the new secure area perimeter. And then again, the dotted, if you can see, is the existing and you can see where the two come together. All right. And with that, I will turn it over to the team.
Bob Hubenthal returning to the podium. I'd like to address some of the public comments and questions that have been raised through this process. We acknowledge our hospital is a major feature in this community of parks, schools, businesses and neighborhoods that have grown up around us over the last 150 years. As a major employer in the city of Lakewood, DSHS wants to be a good neighbor and a community asset. To that end, I'd like to address several themes that were raised in those comments, starting with the land use themes. We highlight that there were a number of comments supporting the master plan and the facilities proposed within that master plan benefiting Western State Hospital, the Child Study Treatment Center and Historic Fort Stillicum Association. And also supporting the improved care and treatment such, such facilities can provide. Concerning the status of the disc golf course. DSHS has signed a four year lease with the Pierce County Disc Golf Association for play on the former Fort Stillicum Golf Course. This use is consistent with the city zoning for open space and recreation. The association will manage and maintain the property. DSHS has asked the association to explore opportunities to allow public access for walking, jogging and on leash dog walking. They're exploring scheduling, access and liability concerns to accommodate that request. The disc golf stations will be removed from the area along golf course road immediately north of CSTC, opening that area for light recreation as long as it does not interfere with CSTC programs and activities. Disability Rights Washington shared their concern about the proposed demolition of Building 27 in the southwest corner of the site, which houses the Fort Stillicum competency restoration program. We have adjusted the location of the new forensic hospital building further east to avoid the demolition of Building 27. A number of citizens question why future hospital development needed to occur on our Lakewood campus. They asked, why can't hospital capacity be accommodated elsewhere? In a less densely populated area or at Eastern State Hospital or on McNeil Island? Quite simply, the legislature has directed that future hospital development occur on our Lakewood campus. Western State Hospital was established in statute, serves the 20 Western Washington counties. Eastern State Hospital serves the counties in Eastern Washington. Operations located on an island due to their isolation are extremely difficult to operate, supply and staff. Similarly, large hospitals located in remote areas off the I-5 corridor are also difficult to staff, particularly with specialty trades, nurses, doctors and psychiatrists. New construction costs to replicate the existing Western State Hospital facilities and support service in a new location would cost well over $1 billion. Several citizens question why a hospital expansion should be, should be located in close proximity to parks, schools and neighborhoods. Presumably that concern assumes that patients will escape from the facility with the intent of causing harm. As Ms. Silva has already explained, our new facilities are designed and operated with multiple security measures in place. Locks, cameras, security fencing, enclosed courtyards and security staff. An escape or elopement from our newer facilities is much less likely than in years past when more patients were housed in historic facilities in the center of campus. Last year before the master plan was released to the public, we met with the president of Pierce College and the historic Stillicum School District's superintendent and high school principal. All three said they had no concerns with the hospital's proximity to their facilities and thought we were a good neighbor. Concerning potential environmental impacts. Open space on the campus will be maintained. The oak groves will remain and the ravine will not be disturbed. The footprint of the new hospital will be somewhat more compact than the existing campus, particularly along the western side of campus. Overall, the hospital census is not expected to increase beyond pre-pandemic levels. Civil admissions will decrease, forensic admissions will increase, such that traffic counts to and from the campus will level out over time, particularly beyond the near term five year period as hospital programming shifts focus. New facilities will be designed for energy efficiency and sustainability. New construction will be issued permits under the new stricter Washington State Energy Code. The revised code of Washington requires that new facilities be designed and constructed to a lead silver standard as designated by the U.S. Green Building Council. We expect to do much better than that. Governor's Inslee's Executive Order 1821 requires that new facilities, such as those planned on this campus, must strive for zero net energy. These are facilities that produce as much energy in a year as they are expected to consume in a year. These goals are achieved by super efficient systems and construction, solar panels, ground source heat pumps and a variety of other technologies, all avoiding the burning of fossil fuels. The design for the new forensic hospital incorporates many of these features. Overall, the greenhouse gas emissions from this campus will decrease. Concerning potential impacts to police, fire and medic services. Western State Hospital employs security staff to respond to on-campus safety or security issues. Western State Hospital contracts with the Lakewood Police Department for law enforcement and criminal investigations. That contract is renegotiated as the demand for police services change. Western State Hospital also contracts with West Pierce Fire and Rescue for medical aid, building inspections and fire response. That contract is also renegotiated every year or two, addressing changes on campus. And lastly, many publicly comment incorrectly associated hospital operations and treatment of patients with prison operations and the incarceration of inmates. While both programs at DSHS and the Department of Corrections have ties to the court system, they are distinctly different programs operating under specifically separate state laws and authorizations. This concludes DSHS presentation on the master plan update for our Lakewood campus, including Western State Hospital, the Child Study and Treatment Center and Historic Fort Stillicum.
Just one, one question for you on public safety impacts and maybe Ms. Silva's the one that to answer. I mean, historically, you know, has there been an issue of, of, you know, forensic escapes, that kind of thing and impacts on the community? I mean, because obviously that's, that's one of the fears of the public. I mean, when you look at the statistics, how bad is that?
I can't speak specifically. Ms. Silva might be able to. We know that the number of escapes or elopements from campus were significantly greater prior to construction of our newer facilities in the early 2000s and the installation of a secure quadrangle that enclosed the central campus. Since that new fence went up, the number Since that new fence went up, the number of elopements have significantly decreased. Lynda, do you want to say more?
Okay. Ms. Brunel, were you picking her comments up?
No, I'm not. If you're able to come and speak into the microphone, that way the individuals online can hear as well. Thank you.
Okay, I will say what Bob said is accurate. We have seen a decrease in the number of elopements, and it was some time ago, and putting up a fence around the quadrangle has made a significant improvement in that reduction. And I will say, as well, is it was not forensic patients, it was more the civil patients on the civil side of the hospital.
Yeah, also, I was a little curious, you mentioned about, there was mention of the contract with the Lakewood Police Department. I take it that that involves reimbursement for calls for service to the facility and that kind of thing? Is that how that contract's structured?
Yes. So the city makes a proposal to DSHS for police services for subsequent years. DSHS includes that request in our operating budget, and generally, it is funded.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. All right, well, let's move on to public comments at this time, and we'll start off with the sign-in sheet. Ms. Brunel, do we, we have a sign-in sheet, right? So maybe if you could get that for me, I'll just go down that list, and once I'm done calling off the names on the list, I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak. So if you're not on the sign-in sheet, that's just fine. And then, once we're done with the sign-in sheet and any comments from people who are present here today, we'll see if the virtual part will work. If not, we'll just continue that part of the hearing to another day, maybe tomorrow or something like that, and wrap that up, so.
Mr. Ulbrich, if we could request a 15-minute recess after we hear from the folks in person, I have somebody scheduled to come down and troubleshoot our mic system so that we can hopefully hear.
I can't hear too well.
Sorry, 15-minute recess after we hear from those commenters here in person. That way, we can troubleshoot the Zoom access so that we can hear from everyone today.
Sounds good. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, certainly. Yeah, okay. All right, okay, let's start. Well, I just have a couple people on the list here today. I'll start off with Misty Ray. Is Misty here today? All right, Ms. Ray, yeah, and anyone who wants to speak, just go to the podium there. And Ms. Ray, for the record, your last name is spelled R-A-Y, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, let me swear you in real quick. Just raise your right hand, you swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Great, okay, go ahead.
Can you all hear me? Despite the mask, all right, works even if you keep it on. Okay. Um, I know, Hearing Examiner, that you are here to talk specifically about the land use and the zoning changes. Given that DSHS strayed significantly from those exact and precise topics, I will also be straying from those exact and precise topics. Prisons and asylums, which Western State Hospital used to be, as we heard in that very long history of the site, are sites of horror. You literally see these places. In horror movies, they are terrifying. I think one of the things that most people agree on, that if you lose your freedom, that is something that you are afraid of. Currently, many of the people in Western State Hospital have lost their freedom either through the forensic commitment or civil commitment process. Those processes have significant issues in them, particularly because our health system and our psychiatric system doesn't actually have a good way of predicting when people become dangerous to others, or when do they become dangerous to themselves, nor can any psychiatrist predict future violence more than 50% accurately. Western State Hospital, as a forensic commitment center specifically, will encompass all the bad things about our lack of healthcare system and all the bad things about our prison system. And you can talk about how they are not the same, they're not connected. You are taking people's freedom, you're putting them in a place where they cannot leave without your permission, there are locks, there are guards. Sometimes you contract with DOC guards. The Secretary of DSHS is now the Secretary of DOC, hand in hand. Or you contract with the cops, which is basically the same thing, as the cops inside a prison. Although you've spoken to the fact that you do significant planning with people when you either incarcerate them in a forensic manner or in a civil commitment way, you've also alluded to the fact that there is a revolving door, and people continue to come back to Western State Hospital, which means that your planning must not be that good. And despite the fact that you say that there are more spaces in the community, given the governor's new plan, those spaces are not actually in the community, they just happen to be spread out. If you are committing somebody, they're not in the community, they're literally in a separate space from the community, the people that they interact with are not in the community, they are people that work there. This is a revolving door, it's not real mental health care, especially when you then send somebody to jail or prison, which you can talk all you want about what is available to people in prisons, but there is not good psychiatric care or any other sort of healthcare in a prison, and most people who end up being committed or end up in prison just become more traumatized and do not get the care that they need. Forced hospitalization does not work. People who are forced into treatment usually don't want to be in that treatment. If people do not want to get better, the results are not going to be good in the long term. And I haven't seen any information that you all have produced about your quote-unquote recidivism rates, or like, what happens to people in two years, in five years? You just say, okay, we're going to put you, you know, in this facility, or we're going to release you on your own and send them on their way. Again, these places are incredibly traumatizing, forced commitment, whether in a local hospital or in Western State Hospital, is very traumatizing to people. And then, just for the Lakewood community, I think that, I mean, all of the people who spoke there are from the Department of Health and Human Services, that is a state-run department. We are letting the state decide for all of us. Through the legislature's very confusing budgeting process, people do not often get the space to comment publicly on that, it's very hidden. I don't think the legislator made it clear when they were doing this appropriation, what it would be for, or how to comment to most of the people in Lakewood and most of the people in Washington State. Like, you might just rubber stamp this, you're caving to DSHS pressure, they want the project here, the legislature quote-unquote wants the project here, the governor wants it here, but I don't know if the people actually want it here. The best thing to do would be to invest in actual community-led healthcare, like Soteria Houses, not community civil commitment places. And again, Hearing Examiner, I understand that you are not in control of the budgeting and what happens next, but I had to address. I also could not find any information about solar panels or offsets in the SEPA checklist, and I'm just wondering where that information is. I'm, you can email me at my email afterwards to show me that, because I do think without those offsets, there's going to be a significant increase in the greenhouse gas emissions and from the hospital, and there's not a lot of good climate plan, climate change planning happening here. I do have one question for the DSHS folks. Again, you can email me afterwards from one of my good friends who was incarcerated at Western State Hospital after serving in our military, and she would like to know if you have a contract with the Department of Veterans. So talk to me afterwards, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. All right, Mr. Johnson, Scott Johnson? Now, Mr. Johnson, is that J-O-H-N-S-O-N, how to spell your last name?
Correct.
Let me swear in real quick. She said, you swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
All right, great, go ahead.
I'll be reading here. So, we should understand that the proposed expansion of Western State Hospital is ultimately self-defeating, a $600-plus million investment that would create the need for further, even larger investments, a bottomless pit of money. The reason is that as long as we address people's responses to deprivation by continuing to deprive them, putting all of our eggs instead in the basket of control and confinement, the so-called behavioral issues we are identifying will spread and worsen. In short, as we shift resources further away from needed things like housing and toward traumatizing institutions, maddening social conditions will lead to calls for more and more institutions of control. And once our approach to addressing social problems is to establish control, there can never be enough, there's never the perfect amount of control. It's like how a rich person can never have enough money. It's doomed to failure because ultimately, you can't control other people's behavior. But we shouldn't want to anyhow. We should be focused on providing what people need to have meaningful self-determination, rather than fighting shadows and controlling appearances, we need to get at the essence of the problem, rather than just getting people who indicate there's a problem off the street and away from their communities that are necessary for them to heal, rather than treating them like lesions on a sick body to be cut off, we should be addressing the sickness itself head-on so that the symptoms stop. Our desperate attempts to maintain an illusion of normalcy is a stake that no bodies should be burning on. It's a goal worthy of no sacrifices. We support places where people can go to receive care and to heal, which is what some might associate with a hospital. We don't support hiding a prison behind the name of a hospital to secure undeserved legitimacy. It is not a coincidence, as Misty referred to, that Cheryl Strange, former head of Western State, now heads the state prison system. It's the same kind of institution. And not only does Western State act like a prison, the biggest piece of the proposed expansion involves an active relationship with the criminal legal system, facilitating people's prosecution, especially disabled people who are already heavily targeted by police. The prison system is widely understood to be racist in Washington, incarcerating black people at six times the rate of white people, and during the pandemic, its response has gone past the point of being botched and is a form of willful neglect that has led to many unnecessary deaths. They even managed to lay the groundwork for a tuberculosis outbreak in the meantime during the COVID pandemic, and this is the kind of place we are trying to funnel more people into right now. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's it for the comment list. Is there anyone else who wanted to say something? Come on up. And I'll just need your name for the record and how to spell it.
Peach Harvey, H-A-R-V-E-Y.
Okay, just raise your right hand, you swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
All right, great, go ahead.
Okay. My comment is in opposition to the Western State Hospital expansion master plan that has been considered today, but I do just want to quickly address the legitimacy of this hearing process and the fact that it is inaccessible to people that are trying to participate online. People cannot adequately hear what is happening in this hearing room, and they're not having an opportunity to participate in this process. There's no closed or automatic captioning available for people to be able to hear and participate meaningfully, and that has not been provided by the city of Lakewood. This is inaccessible, and also, just to note, rescheduling a hearing requires a 14-day calendar notice. The Department of Social and Health Services is proposing this expansive expansion in the middle of the worst housing crisis our state has ever experienced. Rather than using these funds to address this issue, DSHS is lying to Washington State residents and during their sworn testimony, and are using their taxpayer dollars for quote-unquote "solutions" that will not actually address the problem at hand. In fact, one of the goals for this project is specifically forensic commitment. Both forensic commitment and involuntary commitment is not mental health care. Quote-unquote forensic excellence just means you're great at acting as prison wardens and cops. Forensic commitment seeks to forcibly manipulate people's behaviors so that they then have to comply with the horrors of the criminal punishment system, a system that time and time again proves to be racist, ableist, and compounds harm from multiple systems of oppression. This expansion project is purely funneling money to use for behavioral modification. If you move forward with this plan, you're indicating that you do not care about the well-being of Washington residents. If you really cared, you'd take the time and invest your energy and resources into building actual infrastructure that protects and keeps communities safe, like actual supportive care networks. You'd be funding actual community-based programs, affordable and sustainable housing, better COVID safety precautions, but instead, you're funneling millions upon millions of dollars to construct fancy warehouses for human beings, for people. With the goal of building more psych institutions across the state, you're clearly co-opting community as a way to hide the fact that you are just building more and more psych prisons across our state. Building a psych facility in communities is not a viable alternative. You're merely putting more jails for people. This is both disingenuous and manipulative. You're not building community, you're causing harm. The solutions that can actually bring about transformative change must address the root causes of the issues. You speak to trauma-informed care, but forced treatment is not trauma-informed. Spend resources on addressing this worsening housing crisis. Keep people housed, find housing options for the unhoused community, and provide a diverse array of mental health care options that are actually based in healing, and stop using coercive treatment models and pretending that it's care. Stop criminalizing mental illnesses and substance use. Studies prove time and time again that people with or perceived as having mental illnesses are more likely to experience and be subject to violence. This facility facilitates that specific violence by the state under the guise of care. Just because DSHS is not DOC doesn't mean you all aren't on the same team. Why do you think Cheryl Strange was qualified to lead DOC? The fact also that I'm concerned about, that one of the only questions the Hearing Examiner has asked relates to concerns about escapes, which means y'all think of this place as a prison, too. You're complicit in violence, each one of you, in supporting this project. Honestly, the fact that y'all are the leaders and representatives with DSHS and are unmasked during a COVID surge speaks volumes about your compassion or lack thereof for people. You are the safety issue. Stop lies about this project, fund housing, not psych institutions, and for God's sake, wear a mask.
Okay, anyone else want to speak at this point? All right. Ms. Brunel, just one quick question, just to confirm, I take it that you have checked that the audio was working? I mean, the people participating virtually can hear the testimony today, is that right?
Yes, I received confirmation from two individuals. There was a brief period of time where we were muted for about a minute, and a full copy of the recording will be posted on YouTube at the conclusion of the public hearing. At this time, Mr. Examiner, if we could take a brief recess so that we can troubleshoot the audio to ensure that individuals, yep.
Okay, we'll do, we'll take a break till 10:40 then. Do we have any takers out there? There's that. There's that feedback I was talking about. All right. If you're, if you're, oh, I see one, we have one raised hand, let's see if that works. Okay, so get Leslie there. Leslie, can you say something?
Hello?
Oh, there we go. Okay, that's a good start. Leslie, could you state what your last name is for the record and how to spell it?
McCallum, M-C-C-A-L-L-U-M.
Okay, and let me just swear you in real quick, just raise your right hand, you swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Please do not approve the Department of Social and Health Services application to expand Western State Hospital. It is not an essential public facility. Western State Hospital does not and cannot meet the needs of the patients it is purported to serve, nor does it meet the requirements of a facility in the public/institutional zoning district as a mental health facility. Section D of the sitting criteria for the mental health facilities from Lakewood's municipal code addresses transportation circulation. Adding 447 new parking spaces, which would bring the total to exceed the parking standards of Lakewood's zoning code, without seeking additions to improve or improvements to existing public transportation, does not provide appropriate provisions for circulating motorized traffic. When the stolen land that Western State Hospital currently occupies is returned to the Stillicum, Nisqually, and Pualip people, and may be transformed into supportive housing and spaces for peer-run care, I look forward to the area being served by many forms of public transportation, instead of prioritizing single occupancy and private vehicles. Continuing to add more vehicle traffic onto the campus, even if the plans push more traffic onto Stillicum Boulevard, does not assure safe walking conditions for anyone, with considerations to both air quality and the danger more cars posed to pedestrians, much less the students of Stillicum High School. Section F of the criteria states the safety of the general public, as well as workers at and visitors to the facility, is ensured. When recognizing that safety cannot be experienced in a place of violence and coercion, Western State Hospital or any facility which forces pharmaceutical use and forcibly restrains people will not help or ensure the safety of the general public, who will only replicate harm and uphold systems of oppression, racism, ableism, that disproportionately punish Black, Brown, and Disabled People. that disproportionately punish black, brown, and disabled people and destroy indigenous ways of life. It is unsafe to continue the practice of confining people. In June of twenty eighteen, Western State Hospital lost and is yet to regain certification from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services for failing to meet conditions, including those related to nursing services and and physical environment. Western State has not been able to provide a safe working environment and no amount of renovation to a facility where people are being asked to restrain and abuse the autonomy of their community members will be able to ensure ensure anyone's safety. The twenty twenty Western State Hospital master plan, master facilities plan does not meet the conditional no-use criteria. It is detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare. As hearing examiner and as Lakewood city officials, please do not approve the application or allow the project to continue. I look forward to the city of Lakewood pursuing opportunities to provide peer-run care and the the many examples that build community that are not predicated on control and punishment. Please end incarceration at Western State Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Ms. Brunel, anyone else on the list there that raised their hand? Again, you should have a little raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Just click on that if you want to say something or try to unmute yourself and say you'd like to speak at this point. All right, not seeing any takers out there. I think out of an abundance of caution, I will leave the record open until.
We do have a raised hand, Mr. Examiner, FW.
Oh, FW, okay, great. All right, FW, can you say something at this point? See if we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, okay. And Ms., can you tell us your last name and how to spell it?
Right, B U R I G H T.
Okay, let me swear in at this point. Just raise your right hand. You swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Do not approve DSHS's application for an expansion of Western State. During just this presentation alone, I heard language choices and frameworks that struck me as disturbingly reminiscent wonderful partnership with the Lakewood Police Department. To the eager descriptions of invasion of privacy and autonomy through video surveillance and a robust security perimeter, I have to wonder if much has changed since Western State was established one hundred and fifty years ago. I was specifically astonished at the ableist attempt to justify involuntary commitment in the presenter's assertion that people already receiving mental health treatment prior to being incarcerated at Western State Hospital makes them, quote, barely stable. I also want to reiterate the point that was made earlier that forensic excellence is a really chilling phrase that makes it clear that you are proud to inflict violence. But specifically speaking to land use issues, the city of Lakewood must reverse the SEPA decision of a mitigated determination of non-significance and instead require a full environmental impact statement for this project. There were many gaps in the SEPA checklist, including but not limited to failure to adequately address greenhouse gas emissions from the project, failure to plan for compliance with the twenty nineteen Washington Clean Buildings Act, and failure to account for the continued use of new longstanding facilities. During this period of extreme heat in Washington, hopefully we're all reminded that in the midst of a climate crisis is not the time to cut corners on environmental due diligence. Once again, do not approve the application or allow the project to continue. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Brunel, anybody else see there? It looks like that's pretty much it.
Anybody wishing to make a comment via Zoom, please raise your hand. Anybody wishing to make comment via Zoom, please raise your hand. All right, we have.
Oh, we've got another raised hand, it looks like. Who's that? Leslie again. Leslie, did you want to speak again? I think you already did. Maybe she just had her hand.
No, I I would just like to state that I know that people are trying to speak, but the Zoom, there's tech issues that are not being resolved and people are not able to speak at this public hearing.
Ms. Brunel, can you respond to that?
Andrea or Weston, could you please attempt to raise your hand to ensure that feature is working? Okay.
According, this is Andrea. I can currently hear everything going on in council chambers as well as coming from the participants.
Thank you, Andrea.
This is Weston. I also can hear everything going on.
Okay, and Mr. Ot, did you want to make some comments or was that just it?
He's in staff.
Pardon? Oh, he's staff. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ot. All right, well, what I will do is, like I was gonna say before, is I'll leave the record open for written comments. If you're having any technical issues, go ahead and write something up and I'll give you till next Wednesday, which is put that up on my calendar here.
We do have an additional hand raised at this time, Mr. Olbrecht's no to W S H, Kelly.
Okay, all right, no to W S H. Can you say something? Make sure we can hear you at this point.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, okay. And for the record, could you spell your last name for us?
My last name is Johnson, J O H N S O N.
Okay, all right, Ms. Johnson, let me swear in, just raise your right hand. You swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, great, go ahead.
I want to start off just by saying that there have been pretty significant tech issues throughout this whole process. And the intent of the meeting is to hear from the public in which the public could not actually hear one another. There were no closed captions provided. The speakers were largely, like I could hear some of the speakers, but not all of them, and couldn't hear a lot of the other public comments. So I would encourage council to consider extending the public comment period and possibly holding another hearing so that folks actually feel like they can share their voice. This is the opportunity for the public to speak and that has been hindered pretty significantly. So that is going to be my first comment. I want to voice my opposition to this Western State Hospital project. I think, I mean, you've heard from a variety of other people speaking about the issues with this forensic commitment facility. Let's call it what it is. It is a prison. When folks can't leave on their free will, when they are being detained against their will, when they are being forcibly medicated, when consent cannot be given or is disregarded, that is detainment. And it is important that we address it as such. No fancy name is going to cover up the fact that this is happening. We need quality and improved mental health services in Washington state. There are many people who have been impacted by the torturous mental health system in our state and you all are contributing to that violence. Unfortunately, it is neither an intent nor an outcome of forensic commitment to serve the well-being of people with mental illnesses or in the care of the Western State Hospital. There are many accounts from the public and from individuals that have been detained at Western State Hospital about how torturous this facility is and continuing to put money into this facility is investing in violence. No, we need communities where everyone can survive, thrive, regardless of their ability. Some of us have experienced the fatigue and burnout of working in psychiatric settings with insufficient resources and staff. Others of us have felt the pain of loved ones as they struggle to find respite for mental illness when our loved ones experience a crisis. We want support and care, not violence and detention. Any claim that this expansion is community-centered does not hold up, as you have heard from many community members today, especially when we consider how incarceration of any kind removes people from their communities, families, and further traumatizes individuals in ways that negatively impact their communities. There are no material supports provided or care for community members who survive violence or harm to begin with. Many people who have experienced institutionalization at Western State Hospital report that they're experiencing further their mental health crisis rather than resolving it. Families and friends are often also distraught when their loved ones are placed involuntarily, compounded with the fact that forensic forensic stays carry the additional stress of impending jail sentences. Most patients would not say that their experience are healing in any way, shape, or form. This is not investing in healing. This is not investing in care. This is not investing in mental health. Again, this is investing in violence. What people desire is to have care and support in their communities and the money for this project would be better used towards this end. We need an end to incarceration, including forensic incarceration. I want to continue to say that this is an investment in our prison system. It is an investment in violence primarily against BIPOC community members. And you are, anyone who supports this project is supporting violence, violence in your community in Lakewood and creating space in Lakewood despite public opposition to this project to create to create space in Lakewood for that violence. So I would encourage you all to consider not continuing in this project, to listen to your community members as representatives of the community and and not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, again, any last call for anyone who wants to speak? Again, just to raise your virtual hand there at the bottom. As I was saying, I will leave the record open till next Wednesday, five o'clock PM, to go ahead and submit written comments. Ms. Brunel, what's the email address for that? Oh, there it is. It's on the screen, cbrunell@cityoflakewood.us. That's C B R U N E L L at cityoflakewood.us. So go ahead and send that to her also. I think if, yeah, if anyone had trouble hearing, I think also, you know, let Ms. Brunel know and I'll let, you know, staff work out. If you get a lot of information that that there have been some audio problems, then I think staff can, you know, take that information and decide whether we need to do a second hearing or something like that to fix it. But yeah, if any of you have had technical problems, be sure to let Ms. Brunel know. I mean, what staff's telling me is that they've been testing it as we go through the hearing and it's been working from their end, so. But I still want to just double check that, make sure that 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 process worked. Ultimately, everybody will be heard through their letters if they didn't get heard, you know, in verbally today. So, Ms. Brunel, I thought I saw some raised hands again. You were switching around. Is that? Is there anything added there?
Yes, I would also just like to mention that we do still have the W S H masterplan.org accepting virtual comments. And so if you would like to make public comments, you can submit it to me via email or by visiting W S H masterplan.org. We will be posting a copy of the recording onto YouTube following this meeting. And Mr. Hearing Examiner, if it makes sense, I could go through the participant list and give everybody an opportunity to unmute if they are having trouble raising their hand. I do see that we do have one hand raised by Leah Montage.
Okay, Ms. Montage, can you say something so we can be sure we can hear you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi. Okay, and for the record, is your last name spelled M O N T A N G E? Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, let me swear in, just raise your right hand. You swear firm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, go ahead.
All right, I just want to briefly add in my own word urging the council to disapprove of the plan to expand the Western State Hospital. I am in agreement with those community members who have already spoken and have expressed real concern for the violence of this institution. It's a long history of violence and real concern with our institution of forensic commitment overall is underlying that that concern about this institution specifically. We need to improve mental health services in Washington. We have an opportunity to improve them. Expanding this facility is not the way forward. It's not the intent or an outcome of forensic commitment to serve the well-being of a person with mental illness. Locking away people who are struggling does not improve their health, even though the community the community around the person, including service providers, may have the best intentions. Those who have their competency, quote, restored, can be prosecuted and sent to jail or prison where mental health supports are extremely few and far between. And then when they get out of prison, they may not have received adequate treatment or any treatment at all, and their time in prison likely created more mental health issues due to the nature of incarceration. So the whole system itself and I heard a desire to make a distinction between the prison system and the Western State Hospital. But the forensic commitment system is it's like a revolving door between the two and they're very interlinked, right? And so this system itself is very violent and if there's a need for more mental health services and a need to expand mental health services in Washington, then there's an opportunity to do that in a different way rather than expanding the current violent system that we have. So I'll just leave it there and I'll also, because it was asked of us, I'll let you know that I have had periods of time throughout this hearing when I couldn't hear the speaker. And I know that during the public comment period, there were periods of time when I couldn't hear the people who were calling in or where their speech was garbled. So I just want to let you know that and to urge that we have have another hearing where we can make sure that everybody's voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And well, you know, actually what I'll do is I'll extend the the written comment period to August fifth at five PM. And like Ms. Brunel said, the the recording will be posted online today, right? And I'm assuming that that will be an audible recording. And, you know, if we find out it's not, then we may have to do another hearing, but I suspect that it sounds like it probably will be an audible recording. So if any of you listening did have trouble hearing some of the speakers, you'll be able to hear what they said online on the recording and then you'll have an opportunity to respond to it even by next Friday at five. So, all right, any other takers here at this point? Not seeing any. I think we got most of the people who wanted to speak and hopefully all of them. So I'll move back to Ms. Brunel then. Any rebuttal comments or any information you want to share at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Examiner. Just one item that was addressed regarding the SEPA determination and the MDNS and the concerns regarding greenhouse gas emissions. This project is technically a non-project proposal as it is a conceptual plan for the master facilities plan. We will do additional evaluation of the design criteria of the design criteria in conjunction with the design review and building permit process. In the master facilities report, staff report, item eighteen, we do indicate as required by executive order eighteen dash oh one, which was signed by Governor Inslee, all new facilities or major renovations within the twenty twenty master facilities plan will be developed to be designed to be net zero energy or zero energy capable, which is indicated in the the infrastructure section of the twenty twenty master facilities plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on finally to applicants and DSHS. Mr. Kubenthal, any final comments?
Bob Kubenthal for DSHS at the podium. I heard a couple of questions that we'd like to respond to as it pertains to land use planning and the master plan. Ms. Ray's question about solar panels, there's figure twenty-six on page forty-five in the master plan that indicates the likely amount of solar panels required in order to serve the campus. It's not specific where those are go will go, but those specific locations will be identified as individual projects proceed. Ms. Brunel may have already covered Ms. Wright's comment about the master plan states that or the master plan does state that all projects must comply with that applicable codes and laws, including those pertaining to greenhouse gas emissions and Clean Buildings Act. And for clarification, if it's not clear in the master plan, buildings that remain on the Western State Hospital campus will continue to be occupied.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, then I will close the hearing except for that added public comment through next Friday at five PM. Like Ms. Brunel said, the the video for, excuse me, the audio for today's hearing will be posted at that point. And I want to thank you all for your comments. And, you know, as I said at the beginning, this is a land use hearing, but I'm still heartened to hear that that there are people out there that that care about that very vulnerable population that has to be serviced at the facility. It's, you know, it's it's good to know that that people are keeping track of that and watching it. And, you know, I mean, we've made a lot of improvements in that area and have to go probably a bit further as well. But thankfully, I don't have to resolve the, you know, those kind of issues. As I said, I'm working on the land use part of it, which was the impacts to the surrounding community. And there's a lot of information to consider there and I'll consider it all very carefully. So thank you again all for participating today and we're adjourned.